We'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order, and if you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll, please.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. I don't have the sheet. Do we have anyone that's signed up? Is anybody's name on that blue sheet that they're bringing in? Would you please come forward and give your name? And what you're going to speak to is not on the agenda, Kirk.
Yes, correct.
Name and address for our record, sir.
Ruben Cozmeier, 5800 Hadley Street, and I want to just make a statement about the short-term rentals and that discussion that we had two weeks ago.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I live sort of right in the middle of that high-density of short-term rental section that Brian showed on the map. Across the street from me are two short-term rentals, and then next door to me is another home that is currently under renovation and potentially going to become a third short-term rental. So I haven't personally had any, you know, direct problems with any of the people renting, but I, you know, it does seem that one of the, one of my other neighbors has, a next-door neighbor to the two, and, you know, they've, it seems like have been forced to put up some fairly bright exterior lighting to dissuade trespassers, and it's a little bit of a nuisance, but at the same time, I can't really blame, you know, them for just doing what they need to do to try and feel safe. And, you know, at this point, when a nearby house on my street is going to be sold, I just sort of assume that it's going to be bought by, you know, some sort of absentee landlord, and they're going to do the bare minimum of maintenance, and then put it up for a short-term rental to wait for, you know, the housing market to do something different or to wait for the World Cup in a couple of years. You know, and so it's just sort of a bummer right now to be living on this street, you know, in Mariam. I really enjoy Mariam. I understand why other people want to live here as well or come and visit. It's really convenient. But it's just, it's just a bummer when part of Mariam's housing stock is occupied, you know, 80% of the time as a vacant lot, essentially. So the two houses across from me, they're probably only occupied, you know, one day a week each, and so, you know, that's a lot of time that, you know, no one's living there when it could be, you know, someone living there, paying money into the school system, buying things at our stores, you know, and just being a neighbor 365 days a year instead of, I don't know, 12 or 25. And then it seems like last meeting that there wasn't a lot of desire on the part of council to, to do a lot, I guess, about short-term rentals. I acknowledge that they do provide a valuable service, you know, as was discussed. I've used them. I feel kind of weird about it, hearing all of the issues that short-term rentals, you know, do to communities, but they do, it seems, provide a valuable niche that isn't necessarily occupied by long-term rentals or the hotel market. But I do think it is important to avoid the clustering of short-term rentals within Mariam that is being, you know, observed on my street. I think I'm currently within that 1,000-foot buffer of four, maybe five, of the short-term rentals, and soon to be, you know, a sixth. And so, yeah, especially when that cluster of short-term rentals is at the expense of someone who, again, could be living in Mariam, you know, every single day instead of, you know, one day or two days a week. And I think that, yeah, some sort of action where, you know, short-term rentals were, new short-term rentals were restricted to, you know, no closer than 1,000 feet, sounds really reasonable to me. I wouldn't hate if the city went in the direction of Mission or Casey Mo, but I think 1,000 feet's pretty reasonable, and it would still, you know, allow those short-term rentals to provide, you know, that service. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cosmo. Is there anyone else in the, yeah, Mr. Crone, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street. I'd like to talk about real estate acquisition. I know that's on the agenda, but it's part of the secret meeting that won't be up for public comment, so I'll make my comment now. Three times this year, we have approved purchase of real estate already. On January 9th, $350,000 for the former Christian Reading Room on Mariam Drive. That was supposed to be so we could adjust the bridge over the creek as part of the flood control project. That did not happen, hasn't happened yet. It's been sort of coming soon for like 10 years. I'm not holding my breath anymore. But the, the next two were in rapid succession in November. November 13th, $250,000 for 5713 Kessler Lane. It's a 90-year-old house on an industrial lot between the railroad and Kessler, and we signed over 250,000 of our neighborhoods, of our communities' tax dollars to buy that with not a real goal in mind for that property. It's kind of a mess, and we're going to end up having to clean up that. The satellite photo was littered with, like, you know, debris in the, in the yard and cars and such. And then the very next meeting was $180,000 for 5015 Mariam Drive. That was the old barber shop, a very small lot that was actually appraised for $74,000, and we offered 180, or that's what you approved as your maximum cap for that sale. So, tonight, there's going to be coming up another discussion about real estate for possible acquisition. You know, it's interesting that on the 13th of November, there was also that work session and tightening the belt, right? Controlling our spending was, was a big topic then, although that wasn't recorded for the public. It was certainly spoken many times by staff and by council to try to control spending in this next year, and I would assume that would mean now as well. But on the same day as that, as that concern about future budget was raised, we approved a quarter million dollars to buy a lot that we didn't have really a plan of what to do with. And then a week later, there was another one, and then tonight, there is going to be an executive session. Presumably, it's another one. I know there was a letter, an offer letter, sent to every lot on the west side of Mariam Drive, so probably there's going to be a lot more of those coming soon. And I'm just leery, and I would ask you to, to not, you know, go full-throttle buying up the properties down there for whatever you have planned. I think we would have gotten more attendance at that work session as well if the agenda had been more forthcoming about what it was about. And I know you all had had prior contact from staff to know basically what was going to be discussed, the million, million-two mix-up with our budget. And if, if that was on the agenda in any way, shape, or form, I think there would have been more public attending, not just me. But all it said was 2024 budget discussion, I believe, which is about as ambiguous as it could possibly be. And I think we could do better in the future describing what is actually going to be talked about in those work sessions so the public has a fair chance to decide if they want to attend or not. So with that, I would, I'll just close, asking you, please, really think about spending when it comes to the closed session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. Is there anyone else out in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Yeah, I see no one rushing to the podium, so we will close out the public items section of our meeting this evening. Next item up is consent agenda. All items under the heading are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And we have three items on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone that wants any of those removed? Okay, I see no one wanting any item removed. I would entertain a motion for that. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve consent agenda items one through three.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is the mayor's report, and the first item on this mayor's report is the swearing-in of our newly-elected council members. I assume that you would like for us to come forward for that, or like them to come forward for that.
Yes, if they can all come down here in front.
All right. Please go down to our clerks in her presence and raise your hand. And for those in the audience, these are all previous council members that have all been re-elected, so they aren't brand-new and kind of know what's going on, but we welcome them back.
Okay, if you could, I'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, and the Constitution and laws of the state of Kansas, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Mariam, and that I will faithfully, unto the best of my ability, discharge the duties of council member. So help me God. Congratulations, and you can come on up and sign.
You know, you always wonder whether or not council members will come back for their second term once they've had a full term of doing these duties, but they all signed up again, and we appreciate the fact of their dedication and their leadership for coming here and helping out and giving direction to the city of Mariam. Thank you. Okay, well, other items on the mayor's list, I always have a few things to talk about in reference to things that I and other council members have done, and as always, if I leave your name off a list, please, please correct me so I can get that added. But I attended the Lenexa Mayor Bone's retirement celebration. Congratulations go out to him for several decades of public service for the city of Lenexa, and I was, got an opportunity to go and wish him well for his next endeavors. I, Councilmember Hands, and Ryder, attended the mayor's Christmas tree lighting ceremony, where we got a chance to greet Santa, and we have special thanks that go out to the Mariam Park Elementary Choir, who sang Christmas carols for us that evening. And we want to thank Caribou Coffee. They provided hot chocolate and coffee for us that night. And we want to thank Vitale Chiropractic for providing the, and Manning the ornament station that went on down there. And we want to acknowledge our Public Works Department for putting up the tree and making sure all the lights worked, and, and also our Police Department for escorting Santa in, got him down to the site. And we want to thank, obviously, Santa, and we want to thank our Park and Rec Department for putting on such a wonderful event, and goes, goes flawlessly every year. It's amazing how all of those lights light up at the same time, but they, but they do. And we also want to thank our residents, obviously, for attending the event and bringing canned goods and presents for the, for the children. It just makes a better Christmas for everyone in the community, and so we want to thank them. I rang bells for Johnson County Quanis at the Salvation Army at Sam's Club, worthwhile event that I encourage everyone to put a dollar in there. Those are all volunteers out there ringing those bells, and to put a dollar in that little bucket, that's where their main fundraiser for Salvation Army is. Gave blood at the Mariam Community Center. I would also encourage people to give blood. That's probably the best gift that I've, I would be giving this Christmas is, is obviously a gift of life, so I would encourage others to give blood as well. I and Councilmember Silvers and Leahy were the judges at the chili count, the, oh, no, we weren't. Oh, you didn't judge. Oh, I'm sorry. Not, you lost. Well, Bruce, excuse me, Mr. Caldol. Mr. You, you provided the chili. Mr. Caldol judged his, judged his chili, and you lost. But I did, it is notes in here. You do get honorable mention, Councilmember Leahy, for providing the chili for the, for the, for our council members, but who did win was the admin. Excuse me. No, 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 I even got that wrong. Okay, I'm sorry. Let me see if I can get this right. So, we had admin, oh, no, okay, wait, Mariam Parks and Rec, I'm on the second line, got one first place. That's correct, right? That is correct. Admin got second place with some funky meat. Sorry. It wasn't funky, it was elk. Okay, and Mariam PD got third, and, and Councilman Leahy was really close. We had to actually have a re-judging because he almost got third. So I, I think that's, that's, that's what occurred there, but, but that's an event that goes on every year, and it's really, it's a great event. We get to meet and talk to all of our city employees and, and thank them for the job that they've done all year, and so, but that, that did occur. Okay, I, Councilmembers Yadrich and Hands, and our significant others, attended the mayor's annual holiday, social at Strangall and Olapart. That was always, it's a great festival, and it's, it's not necessarily a work session, but it is because you get to meet all the other council members and mayors and the community and get an opportunity to interact with them, and can actually get to meet their families as well, too. And anytime you can interact with those individuals from another community, it helps all of us to, to govern our individual communities because we're finding out what others do in theirs. So Councilmember Hands and I met Mr. Engel, did the council agenda. Councilmembers Hands and Yadrich attended the Northeast Chamber breakfast, I understand. Got to meet with our legislators, and we appreciate that. Okay, I met with the Johnson County Library staff, gave an interview about the history of the old Antioch Library, which started in 1956, which happens to be the same year I was born, so I told them that was a very good year. And, but they evidently wanted to interview some people about how they grew up in Mariam and how they used that site, and I did from 1960 to virtually 1993, when I finally got out of school, I was, I was at that library a lot during those. And it wasn't that I was a slow learner, I got several degrees during, during that time. But, but anyway, it's going to be on the website coming up here next year, and they also wanted to know what the new plaza, what I thought the new plaza was going to bring to our community, and so hopefully that came off well. I was able to attend a large group of, with our Mariam employees who donated time to the Johnson County Christmas Bureau. That was, and always good to go out there, and the Johnson County Christmas Bureau, which is actually located, their office is here in Mariam, puts on an event every year to help thousands of Johnson Countyans who are less fortunate. So I was a greeter at the Mariam Christian Church, if you weren't able to, but we had over 300 people attend down there to look at the 500 nativity scenes that they had put up down there for over a four, four-day timeframe. And I, this is some things that's coming up. I want to remind everybody about the Public Art House presentation that's going to be coming up on Wednesday, the 13th, starts at 5:30 PM at our community center, and Julia Dixon is our consultant, and there was a survey that's gone out, she's going to share some of that information, and she's going to be trying to seek out additional information from the public of what we would like to see for art here in Mariam, so I would encourage everyone to try to attend that if possible. Reminder, we only have one council meeting in December. That's another reminder, and let's see, I also have Councilmember Yadrich and Hands attended the High School Arts Contest. And Director Solukum, how many entrants did we have? I don't have that in my notes.
Twenty-six, four, something like that. It's 126 entries.
Eighty-one students representing 23 high schools.
Eighty-one students, 23 high schools. Okay.
124, 26 entries.
Pieces of art.
850 sub-people submitted from 26 high schools.
No, it's fine. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I should have gotten that. But it was evidently, it's a great event, and they, and you do that every year, and I think that's nice, so you really reach out to everyone in the Kansas.
The art in the community center is incredible.
Yeah, so, and is that still up down there right now, if they do?
It's due up through December 30th.
Through the December 30th, so if you haven't had the opportunity yet, go down to the community center and check out the art that the high schools, it's amazing what, what they do, but anyway, and a good event as well. Okay, well, I think that's probably pretty it. I already thanked the council for being reappointed and volunteering your time, so I think that ends it for the mayor's report. Okay, except, did I miss anybody for anything else that went on? I always should ask that, I guess, because I don't always catch everything, but, all right, thank you for all you do. Okay, first item up is to consider approval of our underground utilities project. Okay, looks like we have Director Kumki coming forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, this item and the next two items are related.
Sorry, that sounds a little bit better. This item and the next two items are related to the same project, so I'll go over the project in general and then a couple details on each of the next ones, but if you have any questions overall, just feel free to ask as we go along. So the 2023 capital improvement plan includes the underground utility project, which includes funding of $4 million from the I-35 TIF fund, and this project includes undergrounding utilities along the Shawnee Mission Parkway corridor from I-35 to just east of Antioch, from east to west, and then from north to south is, the boundaries are west 62nd Terrace down to west 64th Terrace. And Shawnee Mission Car, Shawnee Mission Parkway corridor is a, is a very integral part of our community, and so this project, the purpose is to beautify the corridor and improve the reliability of utility, utility services. The city and Evergy have had ongoing conversations, and they hired a third-party engineer to provide an initial rough cost estimate of approximately $3.9 million, and this is an estimated cost with final cost dependent upon actual construction. So for example, the actual materials cost, the labor cost, and if they hit rock or have any environmental issues, the city would be responsible for any overages above that estimate. So if council approves this project, staff recommends revising the total project budget to $5 million to include a million-dollar contingency for any overages in construction and utility relocation coordination and management, which would be provided by Olson. Addition, if this project is approved, final design and utility coordination will begin in December. Construction is anticipated to begin in the spring with completion by the end of the year, and that assumes that no right-of-way or easements are necessary, but we'll find that out in the final design. And I would be happy to answer any questions on this first item.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Kumki? Okay, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
I was just curious if you could explain how the number of 5 million was landed on. It just seems like quite a large contingency.
That includes the utility relocation services by Olson, which is about 291,000, so that's about 300, and then we just decided to round up. Of course, we're only going to spend, you know, what is expended, so we just wanted to make sure we had enough. So we rounded it up, but we'll only use whatever it costs. And Evergy, you know, we tried to have them zero in on a, a cost, an actual cost, but they wouldn't do it, so we just wanted to make sure that we covered just in case there's any big contingencies that happen in the field.
Right, I appreciate that, and I do understand the need for a contingency. It just seems like an excessive amount, and I understand that you, that we're trying to cover our bases in case we do run into bedrock or anything like that, or brownfields issues or whatever, but is there, is there a broader, or maybe, sorry, a more narrow explanation? I understand the broad explanation for needing a contingency, but like, do we have history of bedrock in that area? I mean, I know the, there was contamination at the Kmart site, so Brownsfield, Brownfields could be in, needing, it might need to be applied to that area, but is there a feeling that you all have, the city has, that we're going to run into those, that a million dollars is necessary?
I do know that we have shallow bedrock in a number of areas in Mariam. I don't know in that actual location. I don't know if you're aware, Brian.
You've been by the site. You saw them digging out lots of rock and putting them into a pulverizer and pulverizing it down and putting it back in there, so we highly expect those things to happen, and as well as you had mentioned yourself, there is a contamination issue up there. It's actually on the hard corner. It's from, we think, an old gas station, so there may be that as well. And then dealing with a utility, we all know the struggles and the interesting intricacies that happens with dealing with those, and as Ms. Kumki mentioned, Evergy had no contingencies in, in any of their numbers, and so it's definitely, we feel wiser to plan for the worst and hope for the best, and that's exactly what this is all about.
And the other thing is, we don't know yet whether they're going to bore or they're going to open cut. Open cut takes longer, and so they'll charge us those actual labor costs, so we just, you know, we just wanted to make sure we were covered.
Right, I appreciate that, and I just felt that it was appropriate to not, this sounds aggressive, I don't mean for it to be, but to gloss over that. I think a better explanation of why a contingency is needed was, was necessary, so thank you.
Ms. Yadrich, go ahead.
Thanks. I thank you, Jason, for bringing it up. I also want to clarify that any contingency, contingency is only used after the budget is used. To clarify that, for anyone who doesn't go in-depth into our agenda sheets and read them, the funding source is also the TIF fund and not city funds or the capital improvement fund. So this is not coming out of the city budget for next year, it's coming out of the TIF fund, which is entirely different fund, something that cannot be touched based on what happened with the property taxes and everything like that. So I think it's important to say that for everybody.
Correct. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions for Director Kumki? Okay, seeing no other questions or hands being raised, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the underground utilities project and add the contingency to the project budget for 2024.
Okay, I have a motion, or I have a second? Okay, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like you have the next one, Director Kumki.
Yes, this is related, and this is the actual utility, utility agreement with Evergy Metro for undergrounding the utilities. So the agreement establishes the estimated cost of $3,865,432, and has some, some items, you know, that it emphasizes that, that this is an estimated cost, and actual costs will be the responsibility of the city. And, and once this is approved, if approved tonight, Evergy will start working on the final design, and that's when they'll determine, as, as I talked about, the method for installation, will they bore or will they open cut? We do know on the north side of Shawnee Mission Parkway, they will have to put the utility in the street, in the pavement, so they're going to have to open cut that, and just wanted to emphasize that we're trying to coordinate this with the Mariam Grand Station project so that there's a lot going on on Shawnee Mission Parkway. Let's get their project done and our project done so that, once it's completed, then we can go back to driving down the corridor without a lot of construction cones. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this agreement.
Any questions, Director Kumki? Okay, I see no questions. I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the utility agreement with Evergy Metro Incorporated for undergrounding utilities along the Shawnee Mission Parkway corridor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and you're up again.
This item would be considering approval of an agreement with Olson to provide utility relocation coordination services in an amount of $291,600. So, right now, Google, Verizon, and Charter are located on the above-ground Evergy poles, so this would include Olson performing any additional surveys. They'll take Evergy's design and lay it out into the right-of-way, and, and they'll do additional surveys if they need to, if there's anything in the way. They have a very large, some very large duck banks, and so if they have to relocate that and we need to do easements, they'll determine that, then they will also coordinate with the utilities to make sure that they have a design that, you know, where, where is this utility going to go in relation to Evergy, so they'll coordinate with them, and they'll be out in the field and, and perform construction observation as well. So, we really feel that sometimes when you have a project and utilities relocate and you have the best plans, and then they go in and they put something in, and then they put it in, in the place that another utility's supposed to go, so it's important to have some construction observation and planning and then design to make sure that this project is successful.
Any questions for Director Kumki on this one?
I
Okay.
It's not necessarily a question, I just want to make sure that we, we state that we will own where all of the different utilities are, are. We own the map after this project is all done.
Yes.
Right, because that has not always happened.
Okay, yes, we will have that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or statements anyone would like to make? Okay, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Shaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve the professional services agreement with Olson for utility relocation coordination for the underground utilities project along the Shawnee Mission Parkway Corridor.
Okay, we have a motion, or a second, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldo.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, do we now have one other, or someone else take this one? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Next item on the agenda is consider an ordinance granting Google Fiber Kansas LLC a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain communication service facilities in public right-of-way. If you will recall, in 2013, Google started their rollout into all of our communities in northeast Johnson County and kind of spread from there. Their 10-year franchise at the time negotiated a 5% franchise fee, and that was primarily on offering of not just internet broadband, but the provision of cable services. So, as we renegotiated those, well, what has changed since then, since in the last 10 years, is they no longer provide cable services, they actually push their customers towards other services, whether it's YouTube TV or whatever the other services might be. So, the cable franchise is no longer generating the same level of revenue as it used to. So, as these agreements have come due with all of our neighboring communities, we've started to collectively look and see what everyone's doing, follow the lead of Overland Park, as we often do, because they usually have the best bet of negotiating the best deal. And so, the template that has been negotiated with the city attorney, between the city attorney and Google, is a 2% franchise fee on everything, so it's their broadband, so that which we, that was excluded on some of those things in the earlier one. So, we don't really have a cost estimate of what it will net us in franchise fee, but we know that we've lost a large chunk of revenue with the, with the fact that they don't do cable anymore. So, the options are, we, we have the 2%, and we maintain the franchise, or we don't have the franchise, is pretty much where we're at. We push them about as hard as Google, we'll let Marion push them. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? Okay, I see no questions, now my understanding is, is the first motion would be to, to waive the customary
Yes, thank you, I apologize, yes.
That's fine.
The franchise does, it does expire by 12:31, but if we are negotiating it, it will carry over into January if we would like to. That is up to council, but staff is recommending that we waive the first reading.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion for that, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance granting a franchise agreement with Google Fiber Kansas LLC.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Give him his hands.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldo.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion now, since we've waived the first reading, okay. Is that, Ms. Hands, is that somebody adding up, or?
Yeah, that's a handout.
Thank you.
I move that the council approve an ordinance granting to Google Fiber Kansas LLC a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain communication service facilities in the public right-of-way of the city of Marion.
Okay, we have a motion, or a second, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldo.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Mr. Neil. It looks like the next item up would be the December CIP update. We've got Director Kumki coming forward.
Well, we've gotten most of our projects done, so the December CIP only includes one project. The information's in your packet, so I won't go into details, but I'd happy, be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Okay, do we have any questions for Director Kumki? Well, I guess you must have had everything in the packet we needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then from informational items, we have the Park and Rec Advisory Board minutes were in our packets. Does anybody have any questions for Director Solcom? She is in the audience, but I see no questions concerning those minutes either, so. All right, well, we've just went through this pretty quick this evening. My understanding is we do have an executive session, Mr. Engel.
Yes, sir.
And you need what, about 15 minutes? Okay, I would entertain a motion for that.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hands, okay, go ahead.
I move that the governing body recess into executive session for preliminary discussion related to property acquisition pursuant to KSA 754319B6, which allows the governing body to hold an executive session for preliminary discussion of property acquisition. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, and city administrator. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 8:55.
Here we have a motion, do I have a second?
7:55.
7:55, wow, thank you.
8:55.
I can't believe it, 7:55.
That would have been a long time.
It would have.
Yeah, I'm glad we got, I'm glad we got that.
7:55.
Yeah, it's 7:55. Do we have a second for that one? Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldo.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Okay, it, it looks like before we, and I assume we'll be going to the back, but we have a lot of students in the back. Who, who are you with, and what, are you just here to find out about council meetings and?
For some civic hours.
For your civic hours?
The lifeguard.
Both lifeguards, okay, there you go. Well, yeah, thank you for obviously serving as the lifeguards for us, and then thank you for being here this evening, so. We will, how this works is we're going to executive session for 15 minutes, you're[1773.13]